All right, I'll open the meeting at 6:30. Um, first thing is public input? Nope, okay.
This is the fewest public, I think, I've ever heard of.
By the way, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you Cindy is also not, she was ill today. She called late this afternoon.
And so was Michael Tyrell.
This sets a new record.
You're now the public.
Record of futility.
You're public, you're the press, you're...
Everything. And the student report will not be held tonight as Michael Tyrell was absent from school due to not feeling well. Senior slide, I think. No? No?
Not Michael. I don't think you have to worry about that one.
Okay. Next is new business and we'll have the school committee sub-policy. Diane or Richard, would you like to take the lead?
Sure. All right, so you all have seen this one before, so this is technically a first reading again because we went back and made some additional changes. I don't know if you had the chance to read through it beforehand, but the purpose was to make this be more realistic to, in the flow of the statements, to be more realistic to what happens in actuality, stating that, you know, if, if a citizen would like to present anything whatsoever, they can do so under the public input section of the meeting agenda, but they also can request in writing to the superintendent to be added to the agenda. And so it talks a little bit about those two different pathways and is a little bit more clear than the first time around.
I think it's perfect.
Okay.
It meets the needs of what the last one didn't meet. I think this is exactly what we, what we need.
Okay.
Yeah, and the language kind of looks very...
Yeah.
So with that, I'll take a motion for a first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve revised policy BCB1, School Committee Operations Procedures for Public Input at School Committee Meetings, First Reading.
Second.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, just because it, for the record, it's, I'm sorry, it's BCBI.
Oh, BCBI.
That is an I.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. The second is the organizational chart. And John, keep me honest here, please, but I believe it's mainly just updating from what was currently there to the current state. And I believe the Director of Student Services is probably one of the more significant changes on this, was just that title.
Yes.
From the prior title, which was...
Director of Pupil Personnel Services.
It's a mouthful.
Yes.
And has that formalized the title already for her?
It would be if the committee was to approve it as a first reading tonight.
Yeah.
So it has not been made yet. It wouldn't be until after the second reading, but I think the spirit of what we're trying to capture here is a title for Cynthia Cohen's position that is more contemporary and I think encompasses more of what her work really is. And I think, I've had side conversations with some of you over the years and I think there's always been a little bit of, I don't know if confusion is the right word, but we've, we've, people often wonder, what is Pupil Personnel Services? But I think the nature of student services, and that is a term that I know other districts have moved to, certainly encompasses, I think, in a better way, the responsibilities associated with that position.
I just have one question. I know this isn't a change in the org chart. Why do the ELL teachers report into the Assistant Superintendent rather than all the other teachers reporting into...
Because they, they are across schools.
Oh, okay, that's right.
They serve students in all schools.
Okay.
Does he also oversee that program, too?
He does, yes. There's Sheltered English Immersion, you sometimes hear of SEI, the SEI endorsement for teachers.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to revise first reading for the General School Admission, CC.
I'll move to, for a first reading for the Revised Organization Plan under General School Administration Administrative Organization Plan, letter CC.
Second.
Very jumbled.
That's fine. Any further questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. Next, CMAC, Regulations Dissemination. You can see the edits here. We have updated the statement that says a copy of the policy manual, just saying the school committee's policy manual, and basically stating that the policies and regulations shall be maintained and published on the school district's website versus available in all schools' town library and town clerk's office. So again, just updating to current state.
Just out of pure curiosity, is it still, will it still be at the town clerk and the town library? Or because it's on the district website, that's...
That's the only version that will be available, is the electronic.
The printed version is quite extensive.
Yeah, literally.
It makes no sense.
Well, not only that, because as soon as a change, a policy is changed, it's always out of date, too.
Reprint a new one.
So...
Any questions? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for the revised first reading of the General School Administration, CMAC.
I move to accept regular, policy entitled Regulations Dissemination, Section CMAC under General School Administration, for a first reading.
Second. Any further questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Yes.
Madam Chairman, if I could, just a quick follow-up on policy.
Certainly.
I think, I think it was the last meeting, maybe two meetings ago, I was asked about prior policies when the Policy Subcommittee was with you and Mr. Buckley about, so I did, I will have, we're next meeting, I think, January 24th, I think it's a Thursday. I will have, in fact, I have them, they were, I finished them today, four or five of those kind of hangover policies from the last round for Mrs. Beltwell and Mr. McGowan to look at. So provided we make some progress on the 24th, you might be seeing those in February along with any others that we do at that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want you to know that that still is on the, on the front burner.
You didn't forget about it.
So does, I did not forget about it, correct. A little slow getting there, but we, it's on the, it's on the docket.
All right. On to Routine Matters. We have no minutes at this time, so Mr. Conley, would you like to give us the budget update?
Yes, please, thank you, Madam Chair. So the December budget report is included in your packet that summarizes financial activity through the month of December. There really is not a lot of new information from the prior report. Most of the same drivers and trends that we're monitoring closely are still the same. We've talked about the district tuition budget and status of those accounts, and certainly things are, things are tight, but we are in okay shape at this point in the fiscal year, and we'll obviously continue to monitor that as we move forward. You know, building grounds, you know, maintenance contractual service lines, you know, we've, we've been able to address any unforeseen costs to date, but we'll continue to monitor those lines as well, but we're certainly within budget. We're certainly into the winter right now, and so we'll definitely be monitoring any impact of the winter months and over the next several weeks, but you know, so far everything looks okay. When we look at utilities expenses and not seeing anything to be concerned about there, obviously we're getting into the heart of the heating season, but we're, we're monitoring those costs and things seem to be remaining in budget, and that's what we're projecting will be the case from now until the end of the year. We talk about the food service program each month. They did close out the month of November with a loss. That loss was slightly higher than forecasted. It was, November is relatively a short month. There was also an extra payroll that, that hit the books in, in the month of November, just how it fell, so I think it, I think we'll see an adjustment in December, so I'm not, you know, totally alarmed by, by the net loss in the month of November. We're still showing signs of improving. Our average sales, mail sales per day are still up. We're seeing the breakfast programs at the bachelor school and the high school continuing to, to improve. And we're also rolling out some more healthy initiatives in, in the new year, in the 2019, which we've been advertising and marketing and communicating out to families and to parents. And so we're, we're hopeful that those will continue to have a positive impact on the program. On the payroll side, you know, everything looks good to this, to date. Certainly everything is, is within budget. You know, the substitute budget is, is looking good to date. We have some extended leave of absences that we're anticipating that will occur between now and the end of the year, but we're, we think we're, we'll certainly be able to address any, any costs in fulfilling those absences within the budgeted amounts. And, you know, at this point in time, I think we're in pretty good standing as we approach that kind of, certainly we're in that midway point of, of the fiscal year. So with that being said, I'll entertain any questions.
So the payroll is on every two weeks?
So payroll, there's a weekly payroll and a bi-weekly payroll.
Okay.
So the, the major payroll does happen bi-weekly, the majority of the staff, professional staff get paid bi-weekly, but there's, there's staff that gets paid weekly as well.
So you, so you can get that situation where you get the third payroll in the...
You can, yeah.
I used to love that when my firm was on that schedule.
I like it, too.
But we've been on a 24 periods a year, a long time.
That's the case.
Yeah, because you get two bonus months with that, paid every other week.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that was, that was good. I had a question on the special education budget and payment for, did we, have we gotten more, have we had additional costs this school year? We've had students move in or changes in placements?
So we haven't had, I mean, since the beginning of the year, we haven't seen any additional costs. We had, towards the end of really last fiscal year, we, at the very late, kind of after the budget...
After the budgeting, right.
Yeah, we knew there was going to be a couple of, of students mainly changing placements.
Right.
That was going to add, add costs and pretty much absorb the majority of those prepayment funds that we had done, which occurred, but things have been playing out after that occurred, sort of as expected to date. So hopefully that will continue to be, be the case.
I would just add that not in the same context of the paragraph or the, or the statement Michael made, that we did have an additional payroll expense with an employee.
Correct.
That we needed to hire.
Oh, that's right, we had a par, right?
Correct, yeah.
Right. But it wouldn't be in the context of a prepayment like as this.
Right, right, right. And how are we, slightly tangential, but how are we doing with substitutes? Is that still an issue, or...
So it's, it's been a little better, actually. I've been looking at the fill rates, I get the report every day, and we've actually, I've noticed in the last couple of weeks, we've been in, in the 80%, 80, 85% fill rate range, so it's, it's been improving.
Okay.
We have hired a lot of new substitutes based on our advertisement and our response over the last, you know, 30 to 45 days, so I'm hoping, and I'm seeing a lot of new names pop up on the report that I get on a daily basis. So I think so far it's been, it's been improving, I would say.
And this is the time of year when it can be challenging.
Right.
With sickness and such, you know, just the winter months.
Yeah.
When you say advertising, do, do we have to separately advertise, or is there like a service that has multiple communities?
We do, we use the ASOP online, well, it's Michael's idea, so I don't speak about it.
Well, we advertise, we use School Spring, which is a program that reaches out to a lot of folks in the education field and a lot of, we're pretty confident that gets out there. We can use our existing software program to kind of blast out emails and announcements, and we use our website, and we have, and then we've, we've actually used, I think we used Blackboard Connect.
We did.
And this kind, and...
Which I think was the first time.
Right.
So School Spring is kind of like an, if you will, like an employee solicitation site for...
And that goes multiple districts.
Jobs in education. That goes all over the...
All over the world, really, yeah.
But for the first time, I think this fall, we were feeling the pinch early on, and I did just a Blackboard Connect out to the community. Some of you, if you had, you would have gotten it as having, you know, being in my database with children in the schools. And we got people that came in, that just, that live in the town, parents that were home and wanted to sub, and so that, that helped a little bit.
And we've, we've used the transcript as well.
We've used the transcript.
We've put in a little posting.
We upped the rate not that long ago, that's helped.
Yeah, we're right in the...
My next question is, can you refresh our memory as to what the rate is?
So it's $80 a day. So we're right, we're, we've done some analysis, we're kind of right.
Is that a flat rate? It doesn't matter if they have a...
That's a flat rate.
...master rate?
Yeah, it's just, it is, it's a daily flat rate. And, you know, that's up from about $60 from three or four years ago. We went from $60 to $70, now we're at $80, and I think we're, we're competitive. I mean, there are some districts that pay a little bit higher in the area, some districts that might pay a licensed professional maybe a premium or a little bit higher.
Yeah.
But we're, we're competitive.
I had just seen a flyer at another surrounding town, and they had a three-tier thing.
Yeah, we have seen that.
Seventy-five, you know, and then it bumped up and bumped up for the other two.
Yeah.
You can get a bump if you are in for an extended period of time.
Right.
Not a daily sub, but not a long-term sub. Was it 10 days after the 10th day?
So after the 10th day, there is an increase. If you're, if you're in that same assignment, 10 days or more.
Which again is somewhat standard with other communities, that, that tier jump.
We bring all our long-term subs in at the same rate?
We do, yeah.
Same, the same step?
National Step One per diem rate. That's pretty, that's pretty common.
That's pretty common, yeah.
Yeah.
If we have an area that's particularly challenging to fill a very specialized license, we may have to do something different, and we have had to do that on occasion.
Like if you're bringing in a physics teacher, maybe?
Psychologist. Usually it's, it's something in a, in a student support service, not necessarily a classroom.
Yeah, okay.
But that's rare. That's rare.
Excuse me. But, yeah, overall, I think we're in, you know, pretty good standing. I do. You know, it's tight, but it's, you know, I think we're, we're in pretty good, pretty good shape. So, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. There is no staffing at this point, and bids and donations. Richard?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. It's a decent number for the time of year, I think. So I recommend, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $471 from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association to offset costs associated with the new water filtration founders at the Hood School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I do have a question on that. Is this something that we installed and they're...
No, you might, you may recall, last spring, except they donated the bubblers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the time, in the installation, and this was, I believe, for the filters.
Yeah.
Now for another set of filters, that's why it's not as, not quite as much money.
All right.
The other one was, I think in the area of about $10,000 for the foundations themselves.
Thank you.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from the Redding Cooperative Bank for the North Redding Public Schools 2019 Parent University.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from Mr. Steve Tardenicio of reimbursement specialists for the North Redding Public Schools 2019 Parent University.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from the Redding, North Redding Chamber of Commerce to be used toward the purchase of a workbench for students in the robotics program at the middle and high schools.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $750 from Salem State University, my alma mater, by the way, toward North Redding Public Schools' STEM STEAM grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was very nice of them.
It was very nice of them. Not that I would ever... I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $2,162.70 from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association to purchase 10 stand-up desks for students across grade levels at the Hood School.
Second.
And so this is in addition to the ones they have now?
Correct.
Expanding the program?
Does that get it into each classroom?
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't think so. They only had a couple...
Yeah. An unrelated note for Christmas, I got a sit-to-stand desk for my office.
I'm kind of looking at one, I really am.
I just got one.
Kathy O'Connell has one, it's...
You're gonna get one with the treadmill?
No, I don't want to.
Not bad, Andy.
Don't get crazy.
Baby steps.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's cute.
His wife...
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation from the Friends of Hornet Productions with a total value of $2,407.40 for items and various activities for the middle school drama department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Nice. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $5,000 from Nicole and Adam Griffith to be used at the principal's discretion to benefit students and staff and the middle school.
Second.
That's awesome.
Yeah, very, very nice.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
If you don't mind, Madam Chairman, I would just, Dr. O'Connell has decided to, very, very significant donation, very generous, she's decided to purchase some Chromebooks for use in the sixth grade.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Excellent.
Starting it off early.
I think that's nice, yeah, I think that's right, right.
And finally, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $14,885 from the North Redding Diamond Club to replace infield grass and complete additional improvements to the baseball field at the high school.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. That's phenomenal.
I went over to the, I went over to the field the other day, I think that turf is, I think that sod's gonna take.
The gentleman that installed it is very optimistic, and I found out, I'm gonna talk to you tomorrow at the Athletic Subcommittee, we can go over a plan they have to deal with potentially the Canada geese that are there, but...
Oh, good.
In, in that conversation, apparently the sod that he used was a little bit longer, both in the turf and in the root, and he's very optimistic that it's gonna be fine.
It looks better than the other grass over there. So you can tell that it's gone through kind of that natural cycle and...
Yeah, no, it, it's...
The weather has to have helped, too.
I think it has.
Yeah.
Although he did indicate to me, Scott Ellis, that they are actually hoping for a little bit of snow.
Yeah, cover it over.
Yeah, yeah. You get some tonight?
Yeah, supposedly a little, not enough to make an issue, but, but yeah, I agree with you, Mel.
Yeah.
I think it, I think it's promising.
All right, upcoming, or sorry, Subcommittee Updates. The Financial Planning Team met on December 21st, and, trying to remember, I didn't bring my notes. We kind of just went over the town warrant stuff, right? Had to rehash that a little bit. Talked about the budget revenue.
Proposed revenue plan, yeah.
So, anything else you guys wanna...
About the acquisition of that property on Route 28?
Oh, that's right, 217.
Yeah, 217 Main Street.
Yeah.
I mean, one thing, you want to talk about the special education?
Sure, yeah.
And the only other thing we were talking about was, we were talking about, a lot of the budget of the school can be impacted by students moving in, and they established years ago a special education, what they call the revolving fund.
Stabilization.
Stabilization fund, but they've never funded it, and so we started pushing that they should put some free cash into that, and there seemed to be some agreement amongst some of the people in the room that, that would be something that would be helpful, because when we do face, you know, challenges of students moving in to district, or just, you know, adjustments and placements, that, you know, it'd be nice to have a stabilization fund where, you know, we could maybe, you know, draw from it if we needed to.
But it wasn't gonna be the stabilization, it was going to be something where the three boards together...
I spoke with Mr. Prisk, I think he mentioned an enterprise, an enterprise fund or something like that.
I think a stabilization fund would be very...
Difficult.
Well, the concern...
It would be complex, right, to access.
Right.
So they was, they were receptive to...
I forget the terminology that they were using.
What they were gonna propose was possibly to try to address that, that the concern with it would be, you have to go to town meeting to get it out, so they were gonna talk about possibly trying to draft some, some language that could go up to the state to possibly be approved, to allow a joint, a joint vote of the Board of Select, of the Select Board and the school committee, to be able to utilize those funds if we, you know, if, if we needed, when something happened, so...
What's the, what is the fund that we've gone to before when we had costs that we couldn't cover? We had to go to the Finance Committee and what, is that a stabilization fund, or what is that?
Yeah, that's the Finance Committee's, like, reserve fund.
Oh, the reserve, it's a reserve fund, so it's not a stabilization, I think it's an enterprise fund, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
This, this is specifically, this would be specifically for accessing a, an unanticipated expense associated with special education.
Yeah. And I think we're gonna research, so a potential like town meeting warrant language of what, how to appropriate funds into this fund.
Right, because presumably we'd have to get approval for language from the town and then send it from the town meeting and then send it to the state, right?
That was, that was the discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was the substance of it, yeah.
It was a good plan.
That was a good conversation.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, and Mr. Buckley, the NORCAM?
I was in upstate New York on vacation, so I missed the NORCAM meeting.
Mr. Venezia with you.
They're usually, they are usually romping times, but...
Okay.
I don't think, they have a son, Mr. Venezia, at one. I think Mr. Webster's the only one they ever remember seeing at one of those meetings.
Really?
Yes.
Jerry did, Jerry went occasionally.
Yeah, he did.
I remember he goes...
And he gets in an argument with somebody.
I wasn't gonna go to the next...
He's taking a couple of months off and then he goes back.
I seem to love Mr. Webster still, so...
That's a mistake, Scott, you know that.
All right, next, on the Subcommittee Schedule. The Athletic Subcommittee will meet January 8th at 12:30 in the Superintendent's Conference Room. CIPC meets January 9th at 4:00 p.m. in Room 5 at the Town Hall. Finance Planning Team meets this Friday, the 11th, at 8:15 a.m. in the Superintendent's Conference Room.
Sorry.
The Policy Subcommittee meets January 24th at 4:00 p.m. in the Superintendent's Conference Room. The NORCAM Board of Directors meets January 24th at 7:00 p.m. in the NORCAM office, and the Substance Abuse Coalition meets January 29th, 10 a.m., here at the High School, Middle School Media Center.
I have a question for either Rich or John. Have we had, is there been another meeting of the, the School Start Time Committee, or is that, no, is it one scheduled?
There is one scheduled for, we, we have scheduled one, one in January, and then, I believe it's two in February and two in March, to sort of kickstart a little bit, 'cause if we, if we were going every month, it would, it would kinda stall a little bit, so we're trying to get a little momentum with a, with a sort of front-loaded meeting schedule, and then we'll hopefully make some progress there.
Did you guys see the insert to the transcript?
Yeah, I saw that.
There was a little, a little blurb about, an article, I should say, about-
Is that in this week?
Yeah.
It was-
Last Thursday, yeah.
In the Middlesex East, that little inside, oh, really? Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
Did Reading vote, did Reading vote to change, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
8:30 to 302?
302. When did they move their, the great, the question is, where did they move the grade school times to?
So they kept that the same.
Cause they, they don't have buses.
Oh, they don't have buses.
They can do whatever they want.
That's right, and that's for September.
That's for September. So they don't, they don't have any buses even?
They run, I think they have two buses.
Yeah.
Cause they're required to bus some students, right, in K through six, right?
It's Reading?
Reading.
Really?
They don't have, they don't provide the optional busing either.
Yeah, I think the elementary, there's almost no busing, but then at the mid, like, they run like two buses that families pay into.
How many elementaries do they have?
They have five elementaries.
Yes, that's so-
And a fairly small geographic area, a lot of people, but-
They're all, all neighborhood schools, essentially.
Right, I mean, there will be, there's three schools in the same neighborhood, and there's a little, I know there's some concern that there's gonna, they're all gonna be within 20 minutes of each other, like, their start times, but-
Yeah, they, oh, right, right by the Y, yeah.
High school, yeah, right.
Yeah, there's three schools there, there's the smaller middle school, and of course, the huge high school, and a middle school.
Is the high, are the high school and middle school gonna be the same time, or is the middle school in the middle?
No, the middle school's staying the same, which I believe is just about 8 o'clock, so it's 8, 8:15, 8:30, that, then the elementary in that area is 8:15.
It's gonna affect your coaching times, though.
That's already been talked about.
Later start times for coaching, right?
Yeah.
And, and there's now more than half of the Middlesex towns have switched, right?
Yeah.
I think there were half had and half hadn't.
It is, I'm surprised that it would be half at this point.
Well, there was five. Couple moved in the, within the past two or three months ago.
And a lot of activity.
All those is going, Burlington, Reading.
Stonem?
That's what I knew of.
Stonem didn't, right? Stonem hasn't yet.
I didn't think they did, so.
There were five this past year.
Is Wakefield in that conference, too?
Yes, they, my understanding, they have not moved.
And Wilmington hasn't, right?
That's my understanding, right.
So I think it's half, probably half and half.
At best, yeah.
Thank you.
Prep for depositions, that's my understanding.
That's my understanding.
I gotta do that, really.
All right, Mr. Bernard, would you like to do the administrative report?
Madam Chairman, I would like to, thank you, I have a few things I'd like to share with you, first is, and I apologize, I just, late, late notice caught an error in the calendar that I had asked you to approve at the last meeting for next school year, the January, excuse me, the 2019-2020 calendar, there were two extra days in it, I have no excuses, but I'm glad I caught it, I guess, at this early time, so I believe the calendar that's in front of you tonight, which I would ask for a vote on, is correct, the change comes, the changes that were made now, I'm recommending that we go back to a full day of professional development on March 6th, you might remember that I had explained to you, I had made that a half day, so that we could recoup the December 23rd day.
Yep.
That will now be a full day of professional development, but it means eliminating what was then a half day on February 14th, so that will now be a regular day of school, and then I took the two days off the end of the calendar, so this, I believe, reflects the 183-day calendar for staff and 180 days of school for students.
So we're ending on the 24th instead of the 26th?
We would be adding, ending on the 24th instead of the 26th with the five schools-
With the five days.
No snow days, we get out June 16th, that would, that would be the earliest-
We would be out on June 17th, would be our last day, yes, right, with no snow days.
Right.
So yes, what you see there, Rich, with the 24th includes the five built in.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry, but I'm glad we caught it early, at least, so, if I could ask you to vote on that.
That'll entertain a motion to accept the revised calendar.
I move to accept the revised school calendar for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Okay, any further questions or concerns? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. The second thing is, in your packet I gave to you, this is just informational, I think, and I, and, you know, as I, I'll periodically go in and look at my goals, my educator plan, I'll look at the school committee's goals, and, you know, digital learning, I think, has been something that has been important to all of us, both in this room and beyond, and, and so I thought I would share with you some documentation that has gone out recently from the digital learning office, particularly through Dan Downs, and especially as we look to advance our one-to-one initiative, which will be introduced in grade nine at the high school in just about three weeks, coming back from the, the semester break with mid-year examinations, so I, I'm sharing this with you just for informational purposes, I know there has been discussion around, you know, what are the school districts' practices when we issue devices to students, and what do we expect them to, to uphold in terms of their conduct and care for the devices that we issue, and I think, you know, what I've enclosed here for you speaks to that and more, and I just thought it was helpful information for you to see, you know, what work is, is going on to, we're not just putting Chromebooks in the hands of kids and saying, okay, go ahead and have at it, you know, there's a very formal roll-out process that invites parents in, we're doing the same thing with the, with the high school now, and we're very excited about having Chromebooks in the hands of the ninth graders as of January 28th, I believe it is, so, we'll have all seventh graders, all eighth graders, and all ninth graders with their own school department issued, issued Chromebook.
I tried to watch the video, but all I got was-
Yeah, I can, I can get you that electronically if you want, it was very informative, trust me.
So was this, was this put out because there were issues, or just in clarify?
This is, just for informational purposes for you, no, I, right from the get-go, we made the decision, and I'm saying we, and it really was a team effort with, with Patrick Daley, Dan Downs, and the digital learning team, that, the, particularly when we introduced the Chromebooks for the first time, two years ago with grade seven, it was a very formal invitation to parents to come to the school with their child and set up an appointment, and go through a tutorial on, you know, this is what your child is going to get, this is how your child is expected to use it, and you as a parent should be aware of what now your child is gonna be bringing home with them every day, and it was, so this all preceded those meetings, so, this is not anything new, or because we've had, we've had any issues, in fact, I would say just the opposite, I continue to be very impressed with how well the students are taking care of the Chromebooks, and, and how successful we have been with, with it as an educational tool, it's been good, it's been very good, ninth grade is very excited.
I've shared links in the past when we first, with some of the stuff we've put out, I've shared links from the website to the mask list-
Oh, nice.
And so many districts say they can't believe the stuff that we're putting out-
It's pretty good.
How comprehensive it is.
No, it is, and this is, this is, I think, you know, as we sometimes do, I think we, you know, those of you who've been around a while know, you know, we, we sometimes get criticized for maybe being a little bit slow with things, but I don't think we're ever criticized for not being methodical, it's not slow for the sake of dragging our feet, it's because we take the time, and, or at least we, we try to take the time and be thoughtful about something new when we're, when we're introducing it, and I think that this was a case where we certainly benefited from not just, you know, trying to get the window dressing out there and say, hey, we're, North Reading's a district now that has one-to-one devices, it was, we were gonna do it in a pretty, pretty thoughtful manner, and I think we're, we're reaping the benefit of that now.
Can you estimate how many, like, screen repairs, or I was just looking at the cost without the insurance, I mean, cause it seems to be a no-brainer, you get three years for $54.
It does, yeah, and we do push that hard, I would estimate that on an annual basis we might send out maybe a dozen for repair.
Of, of any sort?
Of any sort, yeah, and, and the vast majority have the insurance, which is good.
Yeah.
But the, the repairs, the, some of those are just, none of them have been through anything other than just like something going wrong with the, with the device, or a simple accident, it's not, it's nothing, it hasn't been anything about, you know, a device being stolen, a, a device being purposely vandalized, I've heard none of that. You know, it's been good.
And the ninth grade will be getting there soon?
The ninth graders will be getting there, as I believe, three weeks from today, it's whatever, yeah, it's the Monday after mid-year exam, so the start of term three, yep.
And I know, we talked about this with the parent, um-
Our advisory council, yeah.
Yes, thank you, and where the Chromebooks don't really have their brain, it just runs off the cloud, it should be, they should last for-
Yeah.
The entire length of the school.
That's right, that's, that's what we're anticipating, we're counting on that.
Do you anticipate maybe being able to reuse them, maybe for-
I do.
Another generation?
I do, yeah.
I think, though, after six years, it might be tough.
It will, you know, if you had some that were, you know, okay, I could, yes, introducing them in the lower grades, not as necessarily a grade-wide thing, much like we're doing with, say, Kathy O'Connell purchasing some with that very generous donation, it's, you know, you introduce it now, and it might be a cart or two that classes could make use of, as opposed to every student in the grade having them, but I-
Oh, right, yeah.
I do expect that that's something we would do.
I mean, you're dependent a lot on the, the internet connection-
You are.
The speed of your internet connection is really the key.
That's right, but the project we went through, through the grant, helped us with our wireless infrastructure at the three elementary schools, so our ability to do that is greater now, because our infrastructure is much more advanced than it was even three years ago.
So, last year when Janine and I were on policy, we talked about trying to get a device, or a, a policy for the devices.
For handheld devices, I have not forgotten that, yeah, Dan Downs is working on that for me, yeah, you will see, one of the documents that I've given to you in here-
The device guidelines.
Speaks about the device guidelines, exactly, yep, and it's what prompted me, too, to go back to him and say, is this something you could take a look at for?
I've been pushing that for a number of years, but one of the things that, after a few years, I started to look at this, the devices change, have changed so much, become so powerful that, you know, teachers are using them in different ways than I even thought they would be three years ago.
And we've had very good success, we really have, even with, you know, students bringing their own devices in.
Right, that's what I mean, like, yeah.
I use the phones, it's been good.
But again, like, once, once the entire school has a one-to-one device, then you need to use your own personal-
Should, right.
Cell phone is much less, and so-
Exactly.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just think if we're, we're looking at areas where there could be questions in the future, that's one of the areas that I think most need to look at, possibly having a policy in place.
And so next year, we should have grades seven through 10-
That's correct.
-with Chromebooks, so we only have, next year, three more years, and-
We're, we're one year ahead of where our plan was, because of the year mark, yeah, exactly, right. So again, just a, an FYI for you, the third thing is, I, I wanted you to be aware, so, I think the committee, all of the committee members are aware that in the last contract, employment contract with the North Reading Education Association, a, a byproduct of that was the establishment of three subcommittees, one to take a look at our educator evaluation system, one to take a look at the language around extended leaves of absence, and one on the, kind of taking a look at where might we wanna go with curriculum leadership in the district, and I, I just wanted you to be aware that all three of those committees have been formed and all have met, and their work is, is, is ongoing at this point, I think two of the committees had a deadline of October of 2019, and one had a deadline of June of this year, I believe, but, I just thought it was important for you to know that those committees were ongoing.
What's the composition of those committees?
The composition of those committees is, in, let's see, in the educator evaluation, I believe it's four, four teachers and four administrators, you have four on extended leaves of absence, right, the subcommittee?
Yes, we do.
So a four and four, and the same thing with curriculum leadership.
And these are new to the, to this contract?
These are new, well, the educator evaluation one really is an extension, one, it was, you know, we're kind of five years into the new educator evaluation system, and we thought it was important to bring people together and just say, you know, how's it going, you know, the things that we wanna take a look at adjusting, that's probably, that one probably has the easiest task, quite honestly, because things have gone well, there may be a few little tweaks that, that come out of the work of that committee, but the other two, I think, are, are much more, you know, rolling up our sleeves and dating in.
So are there any repeats amongst the teachers and admin for?
There is among the admin, not among the teachers, yeah, there's more of them to go around, you know, quite honestly, yeah.
So you mentioned there were deadlines, is there, does each committee have a particular goal or, or task it's supposed to?
Yes, they do, I can speak to that if you want me to now, tonight, yeah, so when we, when we first met, Patrick Daley and I, the assistant superintendent, I met with the president of the association, Peter Kane, we, we kind of framed, you know, how we saw the task of each committee, and I, I couldn't say to you that I think he was in very strong agreement, that he saw it in the same way after we talked, I mean, again, we have, I think, a very good and positive working relationship, we, we have framed it essentially, I'm not, you know, please don't quote me, but I think essentially what we said to him at the time was, we saw the educator evaluation subcommittee as being kind of an update committee, you know, a few little adjust, much like I just said a moment ago, kind of, you know, not, not as much heavy lifting as, say, the other two, we saw the, we saw the extended leaves of absence committee as being probably an outcome of that would be maybe a side letter of agreement to the contract, you know, much more of a negotiation-style meeting, because there's, there's going to be much give and take, I think, you know, in that, in that subcommittee on, you know, what is the district looking for in terms of potential language changes around extended leaves of absence, and what might the teachers either be looking to preserve or change.
And John, just to be clear about, so what happened in the negotiations was, there was some, we had made some proposals, they had made some proposals or some responses, and it was clear that if we had continued on down the road during the negotiations, we might still be negotiating.
We'd still be negotiating.
Because it's a major, it's a, it's a big part of the contract-
Yeah.
Not financially, but it's a big part of the contract, it, just 'cause, you know, there's a lot of different kinds of leaves, et cetera.
Right.
And so that's why we, we came up with the idea to have a subcommittee to work-
Gotta pull it out and do our own work over here, not in tandem with the contract negotiation, because it would just been, it would've, it was so, it's, it's a big, it's a big issue, and I think it just, it requires some, it's time of its own.
And that must speak to the relationship that you have with the association, that they're willing to do that-
Yes, yeah.
Demand that we get solved the issue.
No, no, it's good, it is good, I have to say, it is, and then I think for the third one, we framed it essentially in curriculum leadership as much more of like, kind of a vision, like, where, where do we, I think, we're almost doing like a kind of backwards design on that one, it's like, you know, the initial meetings have been about, let's, let's kind of put everything on the, you know, stick it all on the wall, and where would we like to be, and then how can we get there, and, and so if we can come to agreement as to where we think we, we should be in terms of a, a model for curriculum leadership, kindergarten through grade 12, then let's talk about how can we get there, so I think it's much more of like, kind of a, a vision, philosophical committee than, than the other two.
And I think both, both, I'll say sides, but both the, the teachers and, and the administrators of the district want a better curriculum leadership system.
I, I think so.
And it's just a matter of, come, again, if we had negotiated that during the contract, we'd still be, so, the best way to do it is to take it outside the contract and then-
Right.
Have a side letter agreement once.
We've been talking about a curriculum leadership model in this district for probably 10 years, and I, I'm not exaggerating.
I think we've been talking about it, I've been on the school committee.
Yeah, I mean, I, it clearly goes back to when I was a principal, I mean, I just, I remember it, it came up in my interview, this job, you know, I mean, it's, it's been going, but this was an opportunity, I think, because it was ripe for, you know, both groups wanting to, to, to see if we could maybe get to some, some, some positive change.
Yep.
So I thought it was important for the committee to know that those committees are, have been formed, I thought it was important for this committee to know that those subcommittees have been formed, and they're, they're actively engaged. The next item I wanted to talk to you about, and, and I apologize somewhat for it appearing in the transcript before I had a chance to talk to you about, and that's no fault of the, of the transcript, I think they picked up on an email that I had sent out to, to parents, but I had all the tensions of sharing with you tonight, but it's good news, I think. Michael and I took a meeting with a resident of the town, who's not yet a parent of children in our schools, but she, she, she reached out to us, and we had a, you know, I think a very good and positive and productive meeting with this, with this young lady, her name is Allison Giusti, I think I'm saying that right, G.I.U.S.T.I., I believe, and she came in and met with Michael and I for over an hour, and had a very thoughtful presentation around nutrition, and I don't, I don't wanna get too bogged down in, in the details with you, but I, I, I hope, and I, I believe that she felt like she was heard, and, and subsequent to that, I'm going back to maybe early December, something like that-
That sounds right.
You know, give or take, and subsequent to that, she then, we, we suggested a meeting with our food services people, Anna McGovern, whom you all know, and then our regional manager for Chartwell's, Chris Callahan, and they also dialed in, I think, a dietitian from Chartwell's, too, and that meeting also was very productive, and I think we really, I'll speak for myself, Michael certainly can join, and he's been part of this, you know, pretty intimately, but I think we, we, we saw the value in what she was talking about, and we heard about some other programs that Chartwell's was introducing in other districts around, you know, kind of more nutritious options, that, you know, while everything we offer is, you know, is in line with what the guidelines from, from the federal government tell us that they need to be, I do think there was a place for making some changes that might be worth trying, and, and have a nutritional benefit for kids, too, so we've, we've started something, in fact, today was our first Meatless Monday, if you were to go onto the website and look at the menu, and that's a concept that exists in other, in other schools, if you Google Meatless Monday, you'll come up on a website, I mean, it's, 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 it's a real deal, and we're gonna try this, and, you know, we've, we've substituted, we're, we're in the process of substituting out some snacks with something more nutritional, and, and, you know, kind of a more balanced approach to, to providing to providing students with alternatives to snack items, ala, what we commonly refer to as the ala card items. So it's, it's, it's in place now, we, we had committed to starting something in January, and, you know, we're going to keep an eye on it and see what, what it looks like in terms of, you know, are kids taking advantage of those options, you know, we were, I think we, Michael and I had the advantage of seeing firsthand the success of the salad bar that got introduced at the high school last year. In fact, there's interest in introducing a salad bar at the middle school now, and I think that gave us a little bit of kind of background to say, you know what, the kids are choosing things when they're available to them that, you know, are, are more nutritional in their value, so.
Yeah, what would you, how many, would you say like 30 salads a day, maybe? Is that a fair number?
Yeah, it was somewhere around that, you know, I mean, give or take, but I
Stack qualify for the full meal if they take the salad?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we get the reimbursement from the
We are, yeah.
reimbursement for that.
Type A mail.
Thirty out of how many, how many meals sold?
On a daily basis? I mean, that's, that's
Thirty out of
That's always a varied.
Thirty out of a hundred, thirty, two hundred.
Yeah, we're, it's about two hundred.
Yeah, it's probably, it's, it's two hundred, it's, yeah.
But I'd say that it might increase since the last, I, we looked, we checked onto that, but
But we go in, we use it. We, and I, I did, I did it today, and, and I see the students in line, you know, it's great, and I think it's great to see, and
So what was the Meatless Monday menu today?
It was a, was it a vegetarian chili? Was that, I saw it on
So
There was no, no meat on pizza. Vegetarian chili.
Vegetarian chili macaroni.
Veggie pizza, black bean burger, as opposed to the traditional hamburger, cheeseburger.
Yeah, so.
So, well, I have two comments. I'll be, I'll take a little bit the other side. I mean, I know that my, I have one of my kids that does buy lunch, and I don't know if he actually bought today because of, there was no meat. To be perfectly honest, I don't think he liked the options, and so, again, I think it's great to have options available, but if it becomes one over the other, I mean, again, I think it's great to have options available if that's what they're choosing, but I'd hope that it doesn't hurt, and then the second one would just be looking at the financial impact of the budget, because
We were very clear.
Because they forget if people stop buying because of
Exactly, no, and I have to say, and I know that this is not necessarily true in other communities, but it is here, we were very honest about that. Yes. That, you know, that they're, you know, it sounds nice, but we do have to be mindful of the financial implications too. And I think every, I think it's, I think it's very fair to say that everybody understood that. Everybody involved with us understands that.
I'm sure they could have like mac and cheese, most kids love mac and cheese.
But that wasn't offered today.
Yeah, vegetarian chili macaroni.
That was the, that was the main dish offering.
Yeah.
At all the schools? At all the schools?
At the elementary, yeah.
Well, not the elementary, it was vegetarian chili, or like a bagel lunch, or bagel ba, bag lunch or something, so.
I mean, there was still pizza.
How quickly do we get the numbers, Michael? I mean, obviously, you want to give it a chance to build some momentum, et cetera, but do you see the numbers on a daily basis? Can you, if you
I can, yeah, I mean, I can go into the system and ask for that report and, and look at it.
It'll be interesting to see as, as time goes by, how
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, no, believe me, we're going to be tracking it, because we know that that has to be
And then are we going to have like Meat Only Tuesday, where everything on the menu is meat?
We're going to have every kind of meat, you get, we're going to have bison, venison, no, no.
I'll be in on those.
It's, 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 you know what, we're, we're very cogn, believe me, no one's more cognizant of the
It's a good idea to try it.
Yeah, I think that's where we're at. We saw the value, and it was worth, you know, I think, I think our snacks, the breakfast carts, you know, we're doing that in the afternoon now. We're using that mobile cart in the afternoon for kind of a grab-and-go snack at the end of the day. Surprisingly, it's been more popular with the middle school students than
So you just put it out in the hallway in the afternoon?
You put it out in the hallway at the end, at dismissal time, yeah?
There's some, you know
Trail mix.
There's some sports drinks.
The Amish sports drinks, those kinds of things, yeah, water.
Kids are using it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think kids are used to walking across the street and maybe now someone just grabbing
Exactly.
Grabbing that.
Yeah.
I mean, it, options, options are great, I mean, with, with a salad bar, it seems like it, you might get a group of people that weren't buying the other lunch that was offered.
Yeah.
Buying now and expanding the number of, you know, meals being sold.
Correct.
But again, when it's like, well, we're going to do no meat today, I just want to make sure that's a concern that I have about doing it, that we're going to exclude people or have people not buying that we're buying, we've had pretty good momentum, it seems like, since I've been on the committee, it seems like every report, it's like, number of meals sold is up, number of meals sold is up, and
That's true.
I want to make sure that doesn't kind of plateau or start going the opposite way, so.
I think you can be assured of our vigilance.
Getting messages from a former, from a former committee member. It is not Jerry.
Yep, Wikipedia has Meatless Monday.
Yeah, right, yeah, believe me, it was, it was a very good meeting, I, we
I thought
I think we met for more than an hour, actually. I actually bought a book that she recommended, as a matter of fact, I was interested in the, so. So, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to monitor that.
Let me, let me just ask one other thing.
Sure.
Have, has there, have you heard any reaction or any feedback from the health teachers in the high school about it?
About this? No. I think it's just been too fresh.
Too new, yeah.
Yeah.
Interested to see, because you would think there would be
I will tell you that they, so when I do a blackboard, what I refer to as a blackboard connect, and when I say that, it means the, the bulk email system you're used to getting them. The, the staff get those?
Yep.
And no one has come to me with anything?
No, that's true, yeah.
I haven't heard anything either way. The next thing, so we, we go to that, Madam Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next is, just in, in fulfilling my obligations of the, the district's representative on the two special education collaboratives that, that North Reading is a member of, the North Shore Education Consortium, the SEEM collaborative, I provided you a link to there. Annual reports, much to Michael's pleasure, I decided not to provide you with paper copies. Save on some printing, but if you, if you would like anything, that certainly I can provide you with a copy. I think the, the most salient points of the annual report are, in my opinion, two things. The, the caliber of, of the programs that those two collaboratives offer to students who can't be serviced in our district is, is significant. I, I, you know, I go there, I was there on, I was at the North Shore Consortium on Friday, and it's, it's, you know, it's, 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 it's significant. The students, the disabilities of the students there are significant, the work that's going on is significant, and I think, you know, for, for the students that need the kind of attention and care that, that, that those collaboratives offer, both SEEM and, and North Shore Consortium is, is, is very important. And that is obviously the most important of the, of the byproducts of our membership. The second thing is, is the financial piece of it, and, you know, it's, that too, you know, is in the, is tens of thousands of dollars each year by our being a member of the, of the collaboratives, so. And you will see pretty, some pretty extensive financial documentation in the two, in the two reports that speak to that.
One, one quick question, are there
Sure.
I know, I know we'll get some more information on this around budget time, but I know last year it seemed like there were fewer people going to these consortiums, but is it still worthwhile to be part of these two? And are there any other consortiums that are collaboratives that we are sending people, students to that it's worth looking into?
Yes, there could be, that we're not a member of.
Yeah.
I think it's unusual to be a member of two.
Yeah.
And the fact that we are a member of two, I think our chances of becoming a member in another, it's a very, it's restrictive. We get, the, the, the two boards that I'm on get applications periodically from other communities to, to become members, and they're not always accepted.
Are these the two of you had, had to identify to that we should be in more than the other, the third?
That's a hard question for me to answer, because it's, those, these are the only two that I have experience with.
It's in no, but like But the other, they're also the two most local to us, right?
I would say
They are.
Based on
I mean Crest, Crest Collaborative is what Lowell, Methuen? Methuen.
Yeah.
Like it's Methuen, it's in that area, right off Route 38, I think it is.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, SEEM Collaborative is in Stoneham, you know, at least it's based in Stoneham.
Yeah.
And, and North Shore Consortium is largely based in Beverly, and that becomes a factor too, transportation does become a factor with, with the community's membership.
What's the cost again to be a member of each of the two?
Oh, I don't know.
So it's $5,000 for SEEM and $10,000 for North Shore.
So it's very, it's a very reasonable
Yeah.
fee, entry fee to get the, the, the
Yeah.
Really lower rates that we get on tuitions.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, I did have something, yeah. Our membership, District Annual Fee at North Shore Consortium is, is $10,000. And today, it's been a savings of this, for our district of, of over $33,000. So, certainly worth being a member.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's just for the consortium, I don't have the SEEM one here. Um, the next thing is, I, I just want to alert you to North Reading Night Off, so we, this will be our fifth annual North Reading Night Off. I'm hoping that, interestingly enough, the last three have been a snow day, no, no school day, so I'm, I'm hoping for, you know, March 12th, Tuesday, March 12th will be the date for this year's North Reading Night Off, so we're asking for kind of a relaxation of, you know, kind of homework academic requirements for that night, for meetings and such. We picked this date because it falls within the, kind of the, the, the seasonal break between the winter and spring sports seasons, largely. I mean, if we have a team in tournament play, they might, there might be something going on, but by and large, it's, it's, it's in between the two seasons, so. An opportunity for kind of families to just spend quality time together. I will be sending out, as part of the, the Community Impacts, Community Impact Teams, K-12 Action Team, I will be sending out an informational flyer, probably sometime in like February, with, with more details about the restaurants, local restaurants that offer specials and things for people to take advantage of.
So fair to book it as you're calling a snow day on the 12th, 2019?
It might be a little, it might be a little premature, but I would, if I was a betting man, I'm not so sure I would go against it, honestly. It's amazing, three, three in a row, three out of four, exactly, kidding me?
You, you do have some control over that.
I do have some control over this, this is true. The last thing is, I want to share with you some good news. I learned just before the Christmas break, actually on that Friday, from the Massachusetts Department of Education, that the one of the schools in our district had been, had, had information submitted to the Federal Department of Education for consideration as a blue ribbon school of excellence. This is a big deal. It's the Little School. So the E. Ethel Little School, and this is based on performance on the 2018 MCAS 2.0, and, and the school's growth. We don't have much detail yet, other than each year, the federal, what I can tell you, what I know to this point, is each year the federal government asks each state's Department of Education to submit a list of schools that they believe have demonstrated the kind of growth that the blue ribbon schools of excellence recognize. That happens, and then we are contacted, those schools that are, I don't want to use the word nomination, because that, that would be the next stage, and I'll speak to that in just a moment, but those schools that are, are to be considered are contacted and asked if you want to continue with the process. And we had a deadline, I think, of January 8th in order to do that. So, Mrs. Molly, the principal of the Little School, and Dr. Daley and I responded to the State Department of Education that we were interested, and we got an email back very, very quickly, that they were very pleased that we would, would want to continue. So we will know somewhere around January 22nd if we make it to the nomination stage of this, of this process, and should that happen, then there's quite a bit of information we will then need to compile about the school and about the district to submit as part of the formal application. So I don't want to be too far ahead on things right now, and I think those of you that have known me a while know, I, I try to keep these kinds of things in check, but I will say that to have been considered by the Massachusetts Department of Education to even submit one of our schools to the Federal Department of Education is significant. And I can tell you that last year, there were only three schools in Massachusetts that were, were ultimately selected and brought to Washington, representatives brought to Washington DC to, to receive the award.
So if, if it goes through and we receive the award, we all get to go to Washington?
I, I don't, I don't, I think four of you get to go, I'm not You can fight over.
Or as many as want to pay their own way.
Now, mind you, I said Washington, not Honolulu. It's not, it's not any place too exotic, but it would be, it would be a trip to, to Washington DC to receive the award, so. I think it is exciting, yeah, and it's very good, and certainly, I think, you know, speaks to a lot.
Worthy of note regardless of how, what happens.
Correct, correct. You know, if, as I'll, I'll always try to be, I'll, I'll be very honest with you, I, I, you know, I'm expecting January 22nd to bear some additional good news for us, so I'm hopeful that that's the case, but I agree with you 100%. So Mrs. Molly has a faculty meeting tomorrow with her staff. I'm going to it for another reason, but we made the decision last week that we would tell them jointly tomorrow, so they don't know it yet unless they're
They're all watching tonight?
I don't know, are we live, Jason?
Of course they are.
We are live, so somebody may be watching, and that's okay, but I think it's quite a nice feather in the, in the, in the entire district's cap, but certainly for, for the Little School, so I'll, I'll certainly keep you informed of, of what you need to know.
Madam Chairman, before we close, and since we have such a light agenda, I'd like to add a topic that would take a couple, no, I'm only kidding. I had a quick question for Michael. I see, a, a couple of weeks ago, I was coming up to a basketball game, and the lights were out on the lower part of the entry, the entry road to the school. They were all, they were all back on that, was that, was that an issue with, was this all the bulbs out, or?
It was related to a, like a circuit.
It was a tripped breaker, basically.
Yeah.
Because I noticed there's one out now, is that just because of the bulb, right?
So the one, the one is, and we actually talked about it walking down there tonight, because we knew you were going to bring it up.
No, but No, but it was, it was really dark when the whole thing was out?
We, we were aware of it, I had noticed it.
Yeah, it was raining that night?
Yeah, I had noticed it, and, and it's not, you know, the lighting is complex, it was, we talked about some of the systems here. But to your point about the, the one light that remains out, I think there were about four or five coming up that were out.
Right.
The one that's out now, which it's a lousy spot where it is, but unfortunately, and this is, I think, good for, for all of you to know, if people wonder, you know, can they just change the darn bulb? It's not that, it's never that simple, right? Unfortunately, for us to change those bulbs, we have to bring in a lift. The electrician has to coordinate with the company to bring in like a scissor jack lift to get up to it, and we've done this before, I think, only once.
Right.
But what we did, quite honestly, because it's expensive, is we make the decision to wait until like eight or nine of them go out, and then we, we, we get the lift, we get the electrician, you know, barring something in, in way of safety. And we, and we, when we do that, what we started to do is inventory the bulbs that we change, and we are replacing them with LED bulbs. And so that should give us, you know, over time
More life.
Yeah, yeah, there's probably, you know, I think there's, there's either been one or two sets that we've done. I'm thinking it's only one.
I remember one.
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking it's only one, so now, I think that I'm, I'm assuming that this bulb, because it didn't come back on, this one lamp didn't come back on when the breaker was, was reset, that it's, it's, it's the result of what I just talked about, so. When a few more go out, we'll make the decision then to have, have the gentleman come back with, with the jack, the lift, and, and change a, you know, whatever, six or eight of them at a time.
So don't keep bringing it up every time.
No, I won't.
No, but I, I think
I learned that last year.
I know you did, and, and you bought it too.
Yes, I did, I bought, I bought it last year when
We have the invoice to, to prove it, but I, I think it's important for the rest of the committee that wasn't here when it happened last, even for the community to know that, you know, we're not, we're not, I mean, I think, I think we're pretty attentive too, and we knew it was out, we knew they were out, I, you know, I just, it's
Well, there are a lot more lights than we had
Correct.
On the old campus, way more.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
You know, the old campus, there are probably 10, 20 light bulb, now there's probably 800.
I know, I couldn't even, I mean, all of them in the front plaza, you know, you remember all of those out there too, the lower lot, so. So
So be careful what you ask for when you're designing stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
No, when you, when you say, for, for those that have been here for many years, you can just say Mel.
Well, Janine's been here six. That's many.
Includes the transition.
Yeah.
That's all I had, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Future business, on January 28th at 6:30 PM at the Batch Elder School will be our next visit, next meeting, then on February 11th at 6:30 here at the Distance Learning Lab, and then March 4th at 6:30. There will be a FY 2020 preliminary budget presentation here at the Distance Learning Lab. And with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, before, if you, if I could, I'm sorry, for the, for the January 28th meeting, I will confirm with you all, but if you could just mark the possibility of an executive session at 5:00 PM, but I will let you know that.
At 5:00 PM?
Yes, at 5:00.
With a meeting at 6:30?
Correct. I will confirm that with you, if it's necessary, but I think it's, if you could, it'd be smart now to just book it in case. Thank you.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
No one wants to, to go home?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.